Good evening, everyone. It is, it's Monday, June 16th. Welcome, everyone. Before we get started tonight, I just want to make note that we did post a special notice of a quorum of our plan commission. We have a plan commission meeting immediately following this meeting, so our plan commission is here in a quorum, but no action will be taken until our plan commission meeting later on tonight when that is called to order. I will call the order a meeting of our licensing board. We have Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingshaim and myself here present tonight. Our first item of business is our licensing board regular meeting minutes from June 2nd, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlick and Zingshaim. Any questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a number of different license renewals and one or two new licenses. Clerk, is everything in line with all these licenses and renewals tonight?
Everything is in line. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I would propose that we take items two through six together, which are Class A Combo Liquor License, Class B Combo Liquor License, Reserve Class B Combo Liquor License, Class B Beer Liquor License, Class B Beer and Class C Wine Liquor License. These are all renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Butchlick. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next one is cigarette, tobacco, and electronic vaping license renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, massage license renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Butchlick. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, scrap dealer license renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlick and Zingshaim. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, amusement device license renewals with new devices.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Butchlick. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And we can take the number 11 and 12 together, new secondhand article dealer license and secondhand jewelry and secondhand article dealer license renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlick and Zingshaim. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries, and our licensing board is adjourned.
I would like to call the order, the Board of Public Works. We have two items on the agenda. Item number one would be the approval of regular meeting, May 5th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Burkwith, second.
Second.
Alderman Sparts. Any additions or deletions or corrections? There are none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Item number two, resolution number 13, approving the 2024 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report of the City of West Bend Sewer Utility. Good evening, Steve.
My name is...
Our Compliance Maintenance Annual Review. This report consisted of 10 sections. We received the a's in all sections. Because of that, we need no further response, just the approval of the resolution.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Schmidt, are there any questions for Steve? There are none. Steve, great job. 4.0, great point average. Can't get any better than that.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carry. There being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn. As chair.
I call the order, a meeting of the Finance Committee. We have six items on our agenda as well as one presentation. The first item is the finance, approval of minutes of the Finance Committee regular meeting on June 2nd.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Schmidt. Any questions, comments, additions, deletions? There being none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We are now going to move to a presentation, the 2024 Audit Presentation.
Hello, my name is Andrea Jansen. I'm a principal with Baker Tilly. Excited to talk to you about the 2024 financial audit results. So before I get into the numbers on the screen, just a couple of notes on the formal audit reports. So first, we were able to issue an unmodified opinion on the city's 2024 financial statements. That's the highest level of assurance we're able to give, also known as a clean opinion. There was a new accounting standard implemented by the city in 2024, GASB 101, related to how we estimate and accrue for accrued benefits, thinking about sick, vacation, PTO, things like that. So you'll see that as an emphasis of matter in the opinion. That's just alerting you to the change. There will be a single audit required for this year that is related to your compliance and controls over federal and state grants. That is due at the end of September, so that'll be a separate report that we issue. As far as the reporting and insights communication, that's the formal communication report that we issue along with the audit. Just a couple reminders there. That's largely made up of required communications, so if you've looked through that report in the past, it'll look really similar. In the internal control matter section, we do report of financial material weakness over financial reporting. As a reminder, that's because we help you prepare the financial statements, so that's not something that you necessarily need to correct. We're just required to report that to you. It's very common for municipalities of your size and staff size. And then getting into the numbers here. So we're going to start with your general fund results. That's your primary operating fund of the city. And here we've got your fund balance by category. Your fund balance is your equity, what's left over in simplified terms, assets minus liabilities. And you can see that at the top of the chart, your total fund balance in the general fund at the end of the year, just shy of 14 million, a slight increase from last year. The different categories of fund balance, if we start at the bottom, your non-spendable fund balance, about 1.4 million. That is made up of primarily inventories and prepaid items, so not things that you can use to pay your bills. Restricted fund balance, really similar to last year. A new committed fund balance of 2.2 million for fire station number one. Assigned fund balance, relatively similar to last year. That's made up of budget carryforwards to 2025. And then your unassigned fund balance is about 9.1 million. We'll look at this more on the next page. That is down a little bit from 2023. Below the chart, we've got your, kind of how you got to that increase in fund balance. I like to start with the middle column. You had budgeted for a balanced budget, and your actual results, about 643,000 of net income, so you did better than plan. On the revenue side, the positive variance was due to investment income, better than plan. And then on the expenditure side, savings in multiple categories primarily related to salaries and vacant positions. On the next page, we are still looking at the general funds, still looking at fund balance. We're looking at that unassigned balance that hasn't been earmarked for any specific purposes, and comparing that against your 2025 budgeted expenditures in the general fund. So we've got your policy there mapped out in the light blue and the black lines. I mean, you can see you are well within the policy range. As we noted, you know, the unassigned balance did decrease from last year, so you can see the ratio trending downwards a little bit, but really within your policy range and comparable to other communities of your size in Wisconsin, so no concerns there. Switching gears and talking about your general obligation debt, mapped out on this chart, the top line is your state statutory debt limit. That is 5% of your equalized value, so nice to see that line trending upward. And then the red line at the bottom is your general obligation debt outstanding at the end of the year, down slightly from last year, but overall, really a stable metric there, so we like to see that. And which, that means that you've got a growing margin between your actual debt and your debt limit, which is also a positive metric. Below the chart, just a reminder of a couple things. You can see the split of your general obligation debt between the city and the utility funds. You do not have any revenue debt typically in the utility funds, we would see that. And then you do have some other types of debt that do not qualify as this general obligation debt, so leases, subitas, and finance purchases of about 1.9 million. And then if you do like data, there is a link on this slide to the Wisconsin Policy Forum that you can look at all kinds of other metrics, other municipalities and communities in Wisconsin. This next page here, page four, we are looking still at debt, but what you're spending on debt in your governmental funds. So about 7.6 million dollars in 2024, up from 2023. And then we compare that to your non-capital expenditures, which your non-capital expenditures were down from last year, which is driving that metric up just slightly in 2024, but you're below your policy range. They're at 20% and in line with comparable metrics, so no concerns with where that landed either. So on page five, we're going to take a look at your water utility results. As a reminder, this fund is regulated by the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin. Your actual rate of return at the top here of this page, 3.88%, is down a little bit from last year, but you do have new rates approved in early 2025, so we see that or expect that to go back up in 2025. Your operating results, they are plotted out. You had about a 1.1 million dollar operating income during the year. You've got unrestricted cash reserves. Actually, there's a number that didn't pull through, right? That should be about 2.6 million at the end of 2024. The months of cash, unrestricted cash on hand are calculating, right? So you can see that that dipped down a little bit from last year. And that was due to planned spending with some of your projects, I think a PFO facility. And then we anticipate that with those rates increasing in 2025, that should come back up. Your investment in capital, because the utility funds are so heavily invested in your plant infrastructure, we like to look at what is equity funded versus debt funded. No concerns with where this is landing. You're about 9% debt funded, so that is, that is looking healthy. And then lastly, we've got similar information for this sewer utility, though this utility is not regulated by the PSC. There was a mid-year rate increase in 2024, so that's driving up that operating revenue in the blue line to about 5.1 million. You had about 481,000 net operating income for 2024, so good to see those lines balance back out to a net income this year. Other ratios, I would say, consistent to last year, your cash restricted, unrestricted cash reserves are really healthy, very little debt in this fund, so that also looks healthy. And before I open it up for questions, just want to make sure to thank Carrie and Ruth and their teams for all their hard work that goes into the audit. That is not a small effort, and we really appreciate their time.
Thank you for that. Andrea, any questions from the council?
Okay. Thank you.
You got off easy this evening, Andrea. Thank you very much. And echoing your comments regarding that the city team's involved in helping prefer, I know a lot goes into an audit, having worked at CPA firms before in the past, so I appreciate your entire team's efforts in bringing together the information that they needed to conduct this, so thank you very much for that. Our next agenda item is item number two, resolution number 14, appropriation of chargeback funds. Welcome, Carrie.
Good evening. The city of West Bend issues refunds for erroneous rescinded or settlement tax refunds to various city businesses, once they get approval from the city council. This resolution is requesting using the approved chargeback funds from Washington County, Moraine Park, and the West Bend School District to help offset the total tax refund that the city pays. This, the full amount is actually charged in the assessors department budget, so the different entities, then those revenues would be appropriated into the assessors department budget. Is there any questions at all?
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingshaim. Any, any questions at this point? There being none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Carrie. Our next agenda item is resolution number 15, authorizing the appropriation of federal recreation trails program funds for the construction of the downtown Riverwalk West Side. Welcome, Mike.
Good evening, everyone. This resolution and the next resolution, so items three and four on your agenda, are very, very similar, so I'm just going to explain both of them at the same time, otherwise I'm just going to be repeating myself, things like that. And I think it just, the story's just a little clearer. So this evening, we have the two resolutions before you. Both of these grants were utilized for the Riverwalk construction project. The river, the specific area for these two grants would be Veterans Avenue on the south up to the Washington Street, Highway 33 Bridge, so that section of the Riverwalk. Both grants are very similar. They were specific to the construction and improvement of that trail. So the first grant resolution this evening is a federal recreational trails program fund. That reimbursement would be $45,000. The second grant resolution before you this evening is a Knowles Nelson stewardship program grant with a reimbursement value of $249,000. So this evening, we are requesting that both grant reimbursements are accepted and transferred to the account provided in the memo. That account is our Riverwalk account left over from our construction process, things like that. It's not a new account. It's an existing account. We are requesting that the two grants are accepted and the money is transferred to that one account. In the future, these funds would be used to support additional projects along the Riverwalk downtown. First project is, we're existing kayak launches, our new kayak launch. We have a lot of erosion going on around that. We want to do some riprap replacement and some concrete work, a more permanent solution around that, that new amenity. Additional projects would be, we've already started working with the West Bend Friends of Sculpture for that same kayak area, developing the sculpture and some seating areas up on top where the turf is right now in that area. Some additional concrete repairs and work near the north bridge, wayfinding along the Riverwalk, wayfinding for downtown, signage for either end of the covered walkway. So a lot of these things, you might say, hey, Mike, why didn't you guys do this during a Riverwalk project? Because we didn't know where our budget or our quotes and bids and things like that would come. So we wanted to make sure we got all of our primary things taken care of, which is what we have downtown right now, the walk, the lights, certain amenities. A lot of these other items, we did not include. The only add alternates we had as part of that project were the lighting of the dam. Those lights are on every evening. And then place of origin, we also have some uplighting. So those were the only two extras that we included in that original project budget. Also, myself and John Fellows, our director of development, we have been working with our private sector group, stakeholders group for downtown. Two weeks ago, we were talking about Old Settlers Park and our insurance reimbursement and some redesigns and rethinking for that as part of our downtown master plan. John is working directly with that stakeholders group, and that group is putting together a lighting master plan for all of downtown, not just Main Street, not just the Riverwalk, but the same area that the downtown master plan covers. I'll call it the greater downtown area. So that private sector group has already contacted Grave Engineering, who did our master plan for downtown, and they started working through that process. So if these funds this evening are transferred to that Riverwalk account, we would, in the future, hopefully use some of these funds for some of those lighting projects. The money's transferred into these, into this account after tonight's meeting. The larger projects will again come back to the common council for permission to bid, permission to award, anything like that. So the money goes into the account tonight, the operational things, some minor erosion control, riprap repairs that we would just take care of, but the big items would again come back to the common council, excuse me, at a later date. So if it gets transferred into that account tonight, it'll be there for these pending improvement projects into our downtown. So, hope that all makes sense. So the first resolution this evening, we are requesting to approve and accept and transfer the $45,000 of recreational trails fund to the Riverwalk account as noted in the resolution.
Thank you, Alderman Sparts and Alderwoman Sizer. Any questions for Mike? I'll just add the comment, Mike, I appreciate your in-depth description of all of that for all of our benefit, which leads us to no questions in that regard, so I appreciate that. With no questions, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And then we'll just move on to resolution number 16, authorizing the appropriation of state stewardship funds for the construction of the downtown Riverwalk West Side.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Sparts. Any questions? There being none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That too, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item this evening is resolution number 17, correction of 2023 and 2024 taxes, SSR East LLC. Good evening.
Good evening. I would like to take a few minutes to explain. We have three parcels that were, have corrections this year that were presented to the Board of Review as part of the 2025 assessment roll. The first two parcels are for addresses 1230 Sunset Ridge Drive, 1231 Sunset Ridge Drive. These are side-by-side condos, one building, same owner, and we discovered in December of 2024, we identified an error in the assessed value on both parcels. We contacted the owner, reviewed the assessment data, and informed them we would make a correction on the assessment. The incorrect value was 303,200. The correct value was 161,000. Total taxes for both parcels, and this is for two years, and the total refund is $3,668.78. The third parcel is located at 310 Aerial Drive. This parcel is an airport hangar that was assessed in 2024 as a building on leased land. In February 25, we discovered that this was a previously exempt parcel, and that should not have been assessed for the building in 2024. All apartment hangars were assessed as buildings on leased land starting on 2024, including this parcel. And when it was discovered that it was previously exempt, we contacted the owner and stated that this would be added as a correction for the 2025. He also contacted us in 2024, questioning the assessment, but it was at the end of open book, and we didn't have all the exemption material, and it was unclear. But soon as we discovered there was an error, we contacted him to correct the mistake. The original assessment on this parcel was $430,000, and it is 2024 correction, would be $0, and we have it exempt for 2025. Total refund for this property is $5,806.06. Any questions on these parcels?
Motion to approve.
Thank you very much, John. We'll, we'll take this as two separate resolutions, only because it's two separate resolutions on the agenda. The first one is resolution 17, the correction of 2023 and 2024 taxes, SSR East LLC.
Yep.
Thank you, John, for the motion.
Resolution number 17.
Second.
And Alderman Zingshaim with the second. Any questions at this time? Otherwise, they'll all, go ahead, Bill.
What, what's the process of, how did you discover these errors?
The second one, the airport hangar, we did have a discussion with the owner in 2024, and he did not submit exemption information on time, and it was unclear that the property was already exempt. So that, that was just a, a different kind of issue. These were all assessed as personal property. Previously, that was the first year they were all assessed as real estate, and that one was overlooked. We missed the exemption. The other one, we were just reviewing our data. As we do, we go over audit reports, and we look at our data, and if we find an issue, we contact the owner. And so we can't, we found the error, and we contacted them immediately and addressed the issue.
How often do you go over the audit reports?
We look at our audit reports annually, ongoing throughout the year. So assessment process, we just ended. We had our open book period and our board of review last week, and we're getting ready to start another year. We have one more board of review. It is a ongoing process.
Any other questions? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Then resolution number 18, correction of taxes for Kettle Moraine EAA.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sparts and Alderwoman Sizer. Any questions on this one? There being none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much, Steve, for your time tonight, and then your in-depth explanation to make it easy to understand. There being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn as chair.
Good evening. It's Monday, June 16th, 2025, and this is a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting, notice the time, place, state, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin state statutes. Clerk, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and omnipotent, justice for all.
Thank you. We've recognized a full quorum of our council here tonight. Our first item of business is approval of our Common Council regular meeting minutes from June 2nd.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Schmidt and second by Alderman Zingshaim. Any questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is our special meeting held on June 5th, our, our minutes from our special meeting held on June 5th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderwoman Sizer. Any questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. July is Parks and Recreation Month. I'd like to make a proclamation for that. I'd like to make a proclamation for that, whereas parks and recreation activities enhance the physical and mental health of individuals, workforces and communities. And whereas parks and recreation opportunities and open space enhance the desirability of communities as locations for business, industry and residential housing. And whereas parks and open space are vital to the appearance and livability of communities, protect our air and water and balance our ecosystem. And whereas it is the right of everyone, regardless of age, race, color, religion, gender, national origin or ability, to participate in parks and recreation programs and activities and enjoy parks and open space. And whereas parks and recreation stimulate tourism revenues and the economic development of communities. Now therefore, I, Joel Longert, the Mayor of the City of West Bend, do hereby proclaim July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of West Bend. And I encourage all citizens of West Bend to participate in the many great special events and programs in our parks in the month of July and throughout the entire year. Thank you. I'd like to invite Lieutenant Inhofe up to the podium. And I have a Resolution Number 12 and I will look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshime, and a second by everyone. Whereas firefighters protect our lives, our families and the economic life of our community from the threat of fire and hazards. They risk their lives to preserve the lives of others and to protect our property and resources from destruction. And whereas Stephen Inhofe became a nationally registered emergency medical paramedic technician in June of 2009 and received an associate's degree as a paramedic technician from Moraine Park Technical College in January of 2014. And whereas Steve Inhofe began his service with the West Bend Fire Department in June of 2000 as a firefighter. In May 2001, he became an emergency medical paramedic technician intermediate. January of 2003, a firefighter officer number one. February of 2006, a driver operator. February of 2013 as a motor pump operator and was promoted to lieutenant paramedic in January of 2022. And whereas during his career, Steve Inhofe was elected to President of Local 2025 in the year 2017 and named local firefighter president in 2025. And therefore, be it resolved that the City of West Bend honors Fire Lieutenant Paramedic Steve Inhofe and expresses its deep appreciation for his 25 years of loyal, dedicated service. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Steve. Steve, you want to say a few words? You're not one to shy away from a microphone.
No, I just want to thank the city. It's been a great run. Like I said, I've been here doing this 25 years. Fire service has given me everything. It owes me nothing. I just think it's a great city to work for. I've got a lot of great memories and I look forward to continuing the trend. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you for your many years of service and we look forward to 25 more out of you. All right, I'm going to invite Chief Noran to come up. We've got Fire Station Number One presentation tonight and we've got quite a few different speakers as part of this. If you were wondering why our Plan Commission is here tonight, they will review the site plan of what we're about to show everyone tonight. So Chief, why don't you kick it off and introduce, maybe introduce the speakers as they come along, if you will.
Sure. Screen is it up?
Not yet. There we go.
All right. So as you know, we've been working for some time on developing plans for the replacement of Fire Station One. This is an exciting project and it's a critical need project for the City of West Bend. I'll say, you go back to the McMahon study on fire EMS operations that was completed in 2021. I specifically addressed the need to invest in fire station infrastructure. Specifically, Station One was our noted to be in the need of either complete gutting the station and refurbishing it or replacing it. That discussion led on to looking at our options as far as what station locations were out there. A process that started a little bit before I arrived in the City of West Bend in October of 23. So after all that time, we've finally come to the point where we have what we believe is a good vision for a fire station that will help serve the City of West Bend for the next 70 years. With that, I'd like to bring up Trevor and Mark from SEH to start off with their overview of where the project stands to date.
Good evening. I'm Trevor Frank, the lead architect and principal in charge for the Fire Station One design project. As Chief Noran mentioned, it's been no small task to get the programming complete for this building and get it to a point where we've been working with our construction manager on getting preliminary costing and design moving forward for the project. I'll step through a few slides here quickly this evening, just to get you up to speed on where things have progressed. We kicked the project off in January. We developed the scope and schedule, so the RFP did a really good job of defining the needs for the fire department. It was up to the consultant to come in and ground truth that program and add some areas of expertise in terms of best practices for fire station design. So in the very first meetings, the West Bend Fire Department prioritized their needs and those were response times, wellness and training opportunities. And as we step through the slides, I'll explain what the impact was of their needs and wishes for this particular facility. We met weekly, we brought a construction manager on. C.D. Smith has been helping us with costing estimates and lending their expertise in terms of construction of the building throughout these 14 programming meetings that we have on Friday mornings. We're at a point right now where we have 30% drawings done. Basically, what that means is through schematic design, we've got a really good understanding of the building, its size, its layout and its materials at this point. The current building area is roughly 44,700 square feet and that is tracking pretty darn close to where that original program was. So it's not growing exponentially and it's not shrinking. We're maintaining that program that the fire department spent so much time in developing early on. Some areas of significant improvement over the facilities that they have here today are accommodations for long-term growth. Right now, as you well know, the current fire station's completely out of room, whether it's sleeping quarters, living areas and apparatus storage areas. Gender-neutral accommodations are best practices that all new fire stations are taking on. With the gender mix between male and female fluctuating and changing quite regularly in the fire service, we've got to make long-term decisions for what that looks like and make accommodations that are flexible so that when there are wild swings in male versus female firefighters, the building can accommodate them. Hot, warm and cold zone design, you probably heard those terms. That's basically cancer reduction, cancer mitigation within the fire station. They want to bring the contaminated gear, equipment and personnel into what we call a hot zone where gross decontamination happens, we get the carcinogens off of that. Then the staff moves into what we call the warm zone or the yellow area. That's where they can completely and fully decontaminate themselves before they go into the green zone, which is the cold zone where that's where they live and they spend the majority of their time in the station. So that property contamination is very important and is a best practice in modern fire station design. We're planning for drive-through apparatus base. Backing an apparatus is dangerous work, it requires a spotter. And it's been known to cause damage to property and potentially injury. So we want to make sure when those trucks get back, they're able to drive completely through the station and head out in the proper direction for response when the tones go off again. And then another area, because the site is large enough, it will accommodate some onsite tactical training. Basically, that's live fire training and simulated training that'll take place in a remote tower building that's adjacent to the building on the site. Some more areas for significant improvement is, and again accommodating that long-term growth, is health and wellness amenities available for the firefighters. Not just this decontamination areas that I'm explaining, but also areas for mental health and mental wellness as well. Decompressing after fire calls and so forth. It provides interior and exterior living spaces, so there's a nice combination for the firefighters. When we have days, more days like today, hopefully to come, they've got another area, an optional area where they can prepare meals and decompress. One of the big components to this too is efficient office areas. So the ISO rating and NFPA requirements about response time are important and they need to be designed into these buildings. We need to reduce the amount of time it takes a firefighter to get from the living areas or their work areas in the building onto the apparatus floor and out the building and out the door. So what we've been doing is working with time lapse mapping inside the building and arranging the spaces for the most efficient response direction from the occupied areas of the station out to the apparatus space. And that improves the internal response time and turnout. We've got properly secured reporting areas. HEPLA and other requirements and state statute require certain privacy policies for report writing. We've got a specific area for that. We've also got expanded training opportunities, not only out at the remote training facility, the tactical training facility, but also we're building them at low to no cost into the station as well utilizing areas within the building like mezzanine spaces for firefighters to also train in quarters. And the long-term vision for all of this is really the recruitment and retention. We saw firsthand tonight the exemplary performance of one of your firefighter paramedics and that's the goal for West Bend, is to hire the best and retain them. We're trying to use this facility by incorporating amenities in the building so that they feel safe, comfortable and at home in order to recruit and retain these staff members. When we talk about response time efficiency, I'll talk a little bit about this chosen site also, the Johnson Bus Site. The map that you see up there is the response time from the current fire station locations. And if you see in the upper left corner of the response area, that northwest corner of the response area, there's an underserved area up there that's beyond seven minutes of response time from the three locations that are currently there. In locating the Johnson Bus Site and designing the building in order to get firefighters on scene faster, we're trying to close the gap on that underserved area. And you'll see in the next slide how we're able to do that. But the six-plus-minute response time area is larger and more prevalent in this model than the one I'm going to show you next. The current locations serve the east side more adequately. You can see how the response has really shifted to the east of the response area. Even outside technically, the response area has some of the lower response times than areas within the primary response area. So currently, Station One and Station Two are in relatively close proximity to one another and that's why you're seeing that heat map shifted a little bit to the east. And our goal is to try to shift that to the north and to the west. So the Johnson Bus Site was selected as an ideal site. It currently protects 11,000 households, going up from 10,698. And so you noticed from the location, I'm just going to flip this back and forth for you, what that does to that response area. The percentage of households protected is rising in this location from 90.9 to 94.3. 94.3 of the households are protected now, shifting the building to the west. The coverage area expanded for better coverage in response areas off to the west. This response area shifts farther west and covers more of the west response area within the city, as you could see from the graphic. So the whole idea of this is to maintain the ISO rating, maintain the best practices and serve more households. And that's what the Johnson Bus Site does for this particular fire station. So the Johnson Bus Site, this is a preliminary site plan of the building and its proximity and location on that Johnson Bus Site. It's 12-plus acres and as you can see to the bottom of the screen or to the south, it's allowing us the opportunity for future growth in that tactical training area as well as any potential future buildings. And it's also accommodating some of the stormwater requirements for the site. So the site is adequate and it is in a good location for the city to make an investment like this in its public safety. So it has, like I mentioned, expandable tactical training ground. It's allowing us to do onsite stormwater retention. There's ample paved areas for the apparatus bay and drive-through capabilities. The site will be fully accessible, parking for both the firefighters, on-duty firefighters and visitors. And its building orientation enhances the interior functions and environmental factors. That's a lot of words to say. We spend a lot of time thinking about where they sleep in this building, where they eat in this building, how they travel to the apparatus base and how they greet the public in this building. And so the orientation of the building is set to capitalize on all of those key components of the design. This is a perspective of the main entrance, so the main entrance to the building faces west. And this is what the public would see or a visitor would see as they're approaching the building itself. So in talking about some of those best practices, again, facility longevity, right? So we want to be able to get at least 50 years of service out of this building. So what are we doing to accommodate that need or that desire to get longevity from the building? It's in the exterior materials that are masonry for the majority of the building. They're low maintenance and durable, along with the interior materials. So as you well know, a building that's 24/7/365 sees a lot of meals prepared in the kitchen. It sees a lot of training in the training rooms, sees a lot of heads in beds, right? More than a typical residential home in most cases. So we have to make sure that they're low maintenance and durable materials. Energy efficiency is at the forefront in this building. We're not only complying with the state energy code, but we're going above and beyond that in some cases with efficiencies, like reheat systems for the apparatus bay that will help the energy recovery unit will capture the heat and be able to reheat those spaces more rapidly with less energy once the doors open and the trucks have to leave. Different strategies we've got in place for some of that energy efficiency. And then again, as I mentioned, really non-gender-specific accommodations. So rather than designing a male and female locker room and over-indexing and under-indexing on them only to find out that they transpose, we've got single-use facilities that can accommodate that flux between male and female firefighters. So in conclusion here, our next steps, as I mentioned, we're at 30% drawings and estimates. We'll proceed with 60% and that'll give us another opportunity to price the project and meet with you all and update you again on the progress. We'll do that again at 90% before the building goes out for bids and construction. So where we stand is that council approvals and updates will proceed, as I just mentioned. The Plan Commission, public hearings and zoning meetings that are June through August. We got a pretty robust schedule of appearances at those committees and those meetings. And then site acquisition, as soon as the building is, or excuse me, as soon as Johnson Bus Site is acquired by the city, the demolition will commence and it's sounding like... And it's sounding like a target date for that groundbreaking and to see some buildings starting to go down out there might be as early as September, September 2nd. This is a, a schedule essentially that I, of what I just verbalized, that, you know, our 60% plans and estimates and 90% plans and estimates are, will be forthcoming. And then the 100% plans and specifications for bidding the early part of September. And with that, I will turn it over for any questions or the, the next topic to be addressed in terms of this agenda item.
Next, I'll have Corey Henchell from CD Smith to come up and just give an overview of the budget and where we're at to kind of back up that $24.7 million number.
Evening, Council. As Chief said, Corey Henchell with CD Smith. I've been plugged in with the department along with the design team for six months-ish now. So as I've been part of the design meetings and part of the listening and absorbing kind of the need in the process, you know, I'm providing cost input and, as Trevor mentioned, construction input throughout the entire process. But as Trevor mentioned, we are, we started off with a square foot budget. What that really means is historical data from both SEH and CD Smith firms, which basically back-checked what, you know, what we feel this project would cost. At that point, we moved into a formal budgeting process where there are lines on paper and multiple plan sheets and materials that were talked about or selected at that point, which we refer to as SD, or about 30% of the documents being completed. That is essentially the $24.7 million number that was given out. At this point, right now, we do have a set of documents at the 60% level. We are currently right in the middle of budgeting that set of documents. Again, that is more of a backcheck to where we see it. As we continue through the process, there are contingencies that are being used from an estimating standpoint to maintain that $24.7 million number as we continue to get smarter about how the project is going to be built, timing, et cetera. We from CD Smith and our team, you know, plug in integrated with SEH. So we're using 2D estimates, which I'll call it old school, where you're, you know, lines on paper, taking it off. That's usually how we start, just because at that point, everything's not on the documents. As they progress with their design, we then plug into what we call our assemble model, which is 3D. And it's taking off all the quantities as they draw them, and again, 2D. So as we progress through the estimating process, you know, we're getting more and more detail because the drawings are getting more and more detailed. I can confidently say that, you know, as we are working together as a team, it's a good push-pull from material selection and cost consciousness and challenging each other to do the right thing, knowing that this is a monumental project and a, you know, a 50-year project. So from my role and as we continue forward here, obviously updating estimates is critical, but then also with that, it's working through the schedule, progressing through, as Trevor had up on the screen, the milestones that we need to hit from a design standpoint, but also from, as we get closer, a bidding and construction standpoint as we continue to progress towards this end goal. So the fun part for us starts when the shovel goes in the ground, right? This is all the necessary information gathering and processes that we, again, plug into and part of the pre-construction process. So the process of really developing the budget is obviously what's on paper, but this budget also includes all the things that the department will need day one when they walk in the door. Examples of that is linens, beds, furniture, you know, chairs, et cetera. All those are what we call soft costs or owner costs, which is part of this $24.7 million number. I'm sure Chief can attest to those painful meetings of sitting down and asking who, who's providing what. But again, it's all necessary to make sure that the council has the full picture. So that's all I had for tonight, unless there's anything else needed.
Thanks, Corey. I just want to go over a couple of things and kind of add on to what they've presented. When you look at placing a fire station, what are some of the things we consider? And I want to go off this map that's, that's up there now. With the current situation, obviously Station 1, Station 2 are, as addressed, really close together. It came as a, a function, a necessity of function at the time because there was a busy rail line that ran through here. And at any point in time during the day, you could cut half the city off from the firefighting force. So we needed a station over there. But as you can see, the, the city limits doesn't really extend a great deal past, you know, the Station 2 at this point in time. And it's really close to Station 1, which creates a, a non-efficient deployment of resources. So by moving, when we looked at moving stations, we looked at something that moved a little bit further to the west, made for a more efficient deployment of resources, and equaled out those response times a little bit. With the Johnson Bus Lot, we get two things. First of all, you know, we're seeing almost all the residences within the city limits of the city of West Bend fall within that four-minute mark, which is your dark red kind of area. The light blue and the blue are then five and six minutes, and the white is a seven-minute mark. So as you see, this creates a much more efficient deployment of, of resources. And it's one of the first things we look at. The other thing about this particular site, it sits right on the intersection of 33 and 45, which gives us quick access to major highway access north-south and east-west to give us the, the quickest response times available. So that's kind of where we ended up with this location. It's, and it's good to note that as you move that station further west, you start to decrease those response time numbers for some areas. And we actually lower the percentage of homes that we cover within the four-minute response. The other thing we look at is the amount of space available. We looked at, I think, 17 different spaces over the course of the year. This obviously was started with Chief Kudick and Chief Gustafson prior to my arrival. Out of the 17 different spots we looked at, we looked at a number of different things. Obviously, location's big. Your traffic, let's address traffic because I know that's been something that's been brought up quite a bit. We know there's a lot of traffic at this juncture in the city. However, we do have the availability to implement light control access, both to the east and the west. And we have a lot of different options on what to do with that. We're working with the DOT, who has given a preliminary okay and a follow-up okay prior to purchasing the land, that the project is, is acceptable to them. It's just finding the right solution for the traffic light control to make sure that we can get in and out of the facility. To be honest with you, some of the other places we looked at, for instance, near Quick Trip at 18th, the traffic was actually worse. And, and we had very little control over where we were going to be able to exit the building. So those are some of the things we looked at when it come to station location. And we believe that this station provides us both the amount of land we need, the location we need, and the access to roadways we need. Some of the other comments I just wanted to address, you know, that we considered, the training, the training center's important as we addressed it. We have to have 16 hours of facility training every year, reoccurring training to maintain our ISO compliance. And to do that right now, we need to have a tower that's at least three stories tall that we can burn in and has two acres of land. And the closest place we can get to that right now is HoraCon. So to do that, we'd have to hire back all of our members on overtime, absorb the travel costs, and then move equipment to HoraCon, which makes that training very difficult to obtain. I want to point out that we've had a lot of conversations with Marine Park. We're working very collaboratively with them. They're supportive of this project, and we want to work together with them to make this a regional training resource for, for the county. I guess with that, I would entertain any questions you guys have. I'm sure you guys have a lot.
Any questions on the, the building or property?
Yeah.
What about the traffic that's exiting Northbound onto 33? Wouldn't that, just some general commentary on that as far as what do you anticipate?
Obviously, that's going to main drive in and out of the fire station. You know, the, the traffic, when it's emergent, will have control of the intersections. The traffic, when it's not emergent, will, you know, obviously have to go with the, with the, the traffic flows that are there. I'm not sure where your question was going, did that answer it or?
Well, what if, what if an incident occurs right during rush hour traffic and you've got a lot of people exiting 45 and?
Sure. And that's what I meant about, you know, stoplight control. What you would do is, is we'll work with both the DOT and, you know, the stoplight folks to, to design a, a process where potentially you hold a one-direction red and the other direction green to clear out that traffic that's there so we can get out on the roadway. They're pretty common. You can even get as pretty, you can get as specific as we're going eastbound or we're going westbound when we leave, if that makes a difference. Because the goal is obviously to get our fire trucks out in a hurry, but to minimize the tra, the regular disruption of traffic flow in the area. So that is something we're currently working with the DOT on and studying.
Thank you.
I just wondered if you could punctuate the importance of updating the HVAC system. It's not something that's been talked about yet.
Yeah, absolutely. Obviously, with the, with the building we're at, the HVAC system in the current building, the current fire station was built in 1960. And I think it's important to note that it wasn't actually built just as a fire station. It was built as a combination, police station, fire station, which means we're reutilizing some of the rooms for things that they weren't necessarily designed for. But the HVAC system in the building is the current, or the original HVAC system that was there. So after 60 years almost, it's, it's at the end of its lifestyle and its life, lifetime, and it's beyond the point where you can get replacement parts. So we're at the point, if it crashes, we'll need to replace it. Several years ago, we got an estimate that was already over $700,000 to replace that, and that was before the recent uptick in all the inflation. So we anticipate somewhere between $1 and $1.5 million for that alone. But in addition, the roof needs replacement or repair. The windows in the, in the building are inadequate, they're small. Some of them don't function well. It's, it's difficult to get proper airflow through, and you certainly don't get a lot of light through them. So overall, there's a lot of maintenance that just comes from a building that's reaching the end of its life, lifespan.
I'll just point out that Station 1, the current Station 1, is two-level. So those guys and gals, whatever the case may be, have to get out of their bunks, get in their gear, and run down two flights of stairs.
That's a, that's a-
Concrete stairs.
Right. That's a great point. As a two-story station, there's only, typically in fire stations, there's one of two choices of how do you get to the apparatus? Either run downstairs or slide down a fire pole. I can assure you that both of them pose a lot of challenges when it's 2:00 in the morning and you're getting up from a deep sleep and trying to listen to what's going on, get your senses, get dressed, and get down to the apparatus floor. So that's a really good point. The station was designed as a one-story station to make it safer to get to the apparatus. Thank you.
All good questions. We're gonna move on to the finance piece of this in just a second if there's any more questions. Okay. Yeah, Sparts?
I have more of a comment than a question, I guess. It's just that you hear the comments and people worrying about, oh, this big Taj Mahal. It's not a Taj Mahal, it's a functional building. And it's what we need. I've worked in the old station, you know, and I, I can second everything that Chief has said, that, yeah, it's too small, the door, equipment's getting to a point it doesn't fit in the doors. We need to, we need to look at new things and, and plan for the growth. And it also represents our city, and it's something that a city should be proud of. And this will be seen from the highway. So it's a, it's a nice sight. I, I'm not crazy about the traffic either, but I'm not crazy about traffic at 7th and Wash either. So we've been lucky. Firefighters have to be careful. That's a, you have eyes in the back of your head when you're going on those calls and having control of the traffic as best we can. If there's an accident now, traffic's packed up anyways, so it's, it happens. But I think it's something that's long overdue. We've waited 20 years, longer than we should have. It hasn't gotten any cheaper, and it's not going to get any cheaper.
That's my concern.
I appreciate that comment, and especially with the traffic situation currently on 7th Ave. You know, obviously, anybody making a right-hand turns, taking a blind corner right into the, you know, responding apparatus doors. So that is one major issue. It's a knock on wood that we haven't had a bigger issue yet. But also, you know, the doors are not sufficient of size for us to feel comfortable running our tower truck out of that station, which operationally is probably the more appropriate place for it. So we're restricted from, you know, doing the most appropriate deployment already because of the size of the doorways. And, and again, the current station, again, simply not large enough. A lot of our equipment ends up getting stored outside or not very good deployable situations. Where under this new fire station, we're able to, to fit all of our equipment indoors, out of the elements, ready to respond 24/7. So it'll be a much more appropriate situation for us.
Just one comment, and I echo Alderman Sparts's comments. And having served on the design committee now for the last six months and engaged with that group even before that, I want to applaud Chief Norr and Chief Gustafson, as well as the entire committee that they've had really focused on this project over the course of probably over a year now. As they've looked at the choices they've had to make and looking at this design and the engineering and the location, they've really looked at it through the lens of what are our needs. And I think that's important for this body to understand, particularly as we will look at the budget next. It's not a list of wants and desires. These are things that, that our, our firefighters in EMS need in this community. And it, this will be an investment that we make that will serve this community and the surrounding communities for 50 to 70 years. I also appreciate the work Trevor and Corey from SEH and CD Smith, and the expertise that they have brought to this process has been extraordinary in getting us to this point, as we now consider what does this really, really look like for our community and for the men and women who serve our community. So I applaud you and your organization and, and all the work that you guys have put into getting us to this point right now. So thank you for that.
Thank you. With that, I'll make way for the financial presentation.
All right. Thank you.
Want this on?
I think there's a different laptop.
Perfect.
Good evening, everybody. I'm John Cameron with Ellers, and I'll walk through the financing plan for the fire station project. From a cost, a project summary standpoint, as it was stated, the estimated project cost as it stands right now is $24.7 million. The average annual impact over a 21-year period of time, which covers both of the financings that we'll talk about this evening, to the average homeowner is $78 on the property tax bill. The plan, as it stands right now, is to finance the station over two years. The primary financing for the project would happen this fall. And I've got a slide on the timeline here towards the end of the presentation. That's estimated to, to have a power amount of $20,150,000. And then a secondary financing would happen in spring slash summer of 2026. That would coincide with the city's normal capital borrowings, with your 2026 capital borrowing. And that is currently estimated to be $4.8 million for the remaining cost of the station project. And this does really two things. One, it allows for the city to seek grants or other appropriations to help offset the project amount. The, the second is that it allows the size of the second financing to be adjusted so that the project isn't either over or underfunded. Couple other things to point out is that the land acquisition is to be paid with general funds and not part of the borrowing. The expected start of construction is September of this year with estimated completion in August of 2026. So that just kind of feeds into some of the variables that we look at from when financing is needed and how we're looking at structuring it, in this case with the two different financings. In terms of, just, just a summary on the financings, as I mentioned, the first one is estimated power amount- In terms of just, just a summary on the financings, as I mentioned, the first one is estimated power amount or issuance amount of twenty million one hundred and fifty thousand. These would be general obligation promissory notes, and this would be the year B issue. The A issue happened earlier this year for regular capital improvement projects. So this picks up twenty million of the total fire station cost with a twenty-year amateurization schedule that starts a little bit lighter and then ramps up to level principal and interest payments after two thousand and twenty-eight, and that's by design, really to wrap around the drop-off of some of your existing financing to try to minimize the impact to taxpayers as much as possible. The second financing that would happen next spring, summer would finance the remaining four point seven million dollars of the project, would also have a twenty-year amateurization schedule with relatively level principal and interest payments coming in after two thousand and twenty-seven. So again, kind of ramping up to that period of time where your debt starts to, to drop off and, and structuring around it. Some of the financial, key financial assumptions, as we'll talk about here on the next page, in terms of growth assumptions for future equalized value numbers, which really, if we're looking at the payment hitting the property tax or being paid through property taxes, that's divided by our total tit out equalized value. So in terms of growth assumptions, we've used some very conservative growth assumptions in our modeling and planning that we'll talk about. The city's economic growth in terms of increase in equalized value year over year, over the last five years, has averaged just under eight and a half percent per year. The planning models that we've, that we'll talk about assumes continued year-over-year growth at four point two-three percent or fifty percent of the historic five-year trend. On top of that, your net new construction or new construction growth over the last five years has averaged one point three-nine percent, and we're also assuming fifty percent of that going forward, or just under point seven percent. Some other items to kind of highlight is you've got some upcoming tax incremental finance district closures or projected closures that we've modeled into the planning numbers. TID seven, in terms of budget year impact, would, would impact budget year two thousand and twenty-seven. TID three is estimated to impact budget year two thousand and twenty-nine, and then TIDS four, five, six, and nine in two thousand and thirty. So where that really comes into, into play here, as we'll show in a, in the next slide, is as a TIF district closes, that increment goes back from your TID in side of the ledger, which is the total amount of equalized development in the city, to the TID out side of the ledger, which is the total equalized value of the city, less any incremental value of any active tax incremental property districts. Where that is important is that your mil rate is divided by, is, is taken by dividing the property tax levy by your TID out equalized value. So as we have a TIF district that closes, it provides a nice bump in our TID out equalized value, and all the things being equal drives the mil rate down. The other thing, from an interest rate standpoint, with the principal and interest payments on the debt, is we're certainly always monitoring the bond market, but the bond market has stabilized quite nicely over the last month. The financing plan is based on recent sales with similar credit structures, plus thirty basis points or point three percent for the debt to be issued in fall of this year, and fifty basis points over where interest rates are now for debt to be issued in two thousand and twenty-six. So some buffer for potential interest rate movement. So this next page just shows that those growth assumptions and equalized value, the top part of the page shows the historical five-year trend in TID out, TID in value. The next part of the page just shows the, the breakdown of TID out, change in TID out equalized value, which has averaged over eight percent per year. So we're discounting future growth assumptions by fifty percent in terms of changes in equalized value over where things have been historically. And then down at the bottom is where we're projecting out future years of TID out and TID in equalized value growth. TID out, again, factors into the mil rate. TID in factors into your total level of general obligation borrowing capacity. So all communities in the state of Wisconsin have a finite amount of general obligation borrowing power, and that is no more than five percent of your total equalized value. So you can see both of those trending over time. And then on the TID outside, we're, we're showing where we're factoring in the TID closures. From a debt schedule standpoint, what's shown on this page is the estimated principal and interest payments for the debt to be issued this fall. As we said, we, we've got thirty basis point cushion built into the scale, the interest rate scale that you see here. Like the city's existing debt, this would be anticipated to be done and financed through a competitive sale out in the open market. On the day of sale, the underwriter will be bidding on the total price of the promissory notes. That'll include their underwriter's discount, and then the interest rate that you see here for each maturity will be locked for that twenty-year period of time. And like your existing debt, there will also be a call feature or prepayment ability with this debt that would allow you either to, you know, partially or fully prepay the debt or refinance it for interest rate savings at some point in the future if interest rates are lower than they are at the time of the sale. So in terms of the total principal and interest payments, you can see debt starting in two thousand and twenty-six and then really starting to ramp up to kind of its full level by two thousand and, really, twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty, at about one point six million dollars a year. The second issue, I guess, would be done next spring with interest expense starting in two thousand and twenty-seven, principal expense starting in two thousand and twenty-eight. This one also would ramp up fairly quickly to its full level principal and interest schedule starting in two thousand and twenty-eight. In terms of the tax impact analysis and general obligation borrowing capacity, we'll talk about this in greater detail here in a second. But the debt service levy remains consistent really through next year, and it starts to drop in two thousand and twenty-seven, allowing us to kind of wrap around the, the principal and interest payments of the new debt to try to minimize the impact to taxpayers within the city to the greatest extent possible. As I mentioned, the overall tax impact to the average homeowner for both issues over the life of the debt is approximately seventy-eight dollars a year, or one thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars over the life of both issues. In terms of borrowing capacity, so I mentioned that five percent of total equalized value as the maximum amount of borrowing capacity, including these issues, the city would be at approximately twenty-eight percent of your total borrowing capacity. So right now, prior to the issues, the city is at twenty percent of its total borrowing capacity. This next page shows the estimated tax impact analysis. So walking from left to right, the left-hand side of the page shows the total principal and interest payments for both issues. The twenty point one-five million first and then the next issue in the second column. So the total net debt service levy is shown in the column after that. So that takes into consideration your existing debt, plus the proposed debt that is coming online and the levy change from year over year. And then we get to the estimated tax impact analysis. So under the set of columns where it says taxes up at the top, the total tax rate for debt service as it exists currently is shown as the first number at eighty-eight cents per thousand. So as this debt comes online, it's anticipated that that will go from eighty-eight cents per thousand to a dollar nine cents per thousand, starting in two thousand and twenty-six, and then a dollar ten cents, a dollar ten cents per thousand, and then start to, to decline again. And this obviously doesn't factor any debt issuances in the future beyond these two fire station projects. So this shows just your existing debt plus these two. But it factors in nicely for layering in future debt issuances. When you look at the impact for a home valued at just over three hundred thousand dollars, currently of the total property tax bill, two hundred and sixty-six dollars of it goes to paid debt. That will go to three hundred and twenty-eight dollars estimated in two thousand and twenty-six, and then up to eighty dollars in two thousand and twenty-seven. So this last column is just the annual change from where you are currently, year in and year out. So if you sum that in total, over that twenty-one-year period of time, you get one thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars, and it averages seventy-eight dollars over that, that same period of time. From a borrowing capacity standpoint, the left-hand side of this page shows your total current and then projected equalized value on a TID in basis. So this is the total equalized value of all property within the city, growing at just under five percent per year. Your debt limit is five percent of that number. So right now, you're at twenty percent, or at the end of two thousand and twenty-five, you'll be at twenty percent of your outstanding debt limit. These, this issue coming in the fall of this year would take you to twenty-eight percent of your limit, and then you see you're trending downward as you grow in equalized value and you pay off existing debt. From a, an initial financing timeline standpoint, as I mentioned, the, we're currently planning for the first issue to occur in fall of this year. Specifically in September, we would be looking to have the council adopt initial authorizing resolutions through what's called a parameters resolution. So a parameters resolution would establish maximum parameters under which the city would allow the financing, or the council would allow the financing to occur. It designates specific people. Could be the mayor, could be the city administrator, could be the finance director, but it allows people to sign off on that borrowing if the financing parameters are met. And the, the biggest thing is that allows the financing to occur on a non-council meeting night. Most municipalities have their meetings on Mondays and Tuesday nights. So this allows us to really move the sale to a, a night or a day of the week where we know there's not going to be as much competition out in the marketplace. The credit quality of the city and the size of the debt issue really has the, we have the opportunity to kind of command the attention of the market when we take this to market. So it just allows us to really maximize that, that potential. The other thing is that it allows us to manage the, the sale for market movement. If we have seen, you know, the roller coaster that we've ridden over the last couple of months, a parameter, the nice thing about a parameters resolution is that it gives us flexibility to pivot and potentially hold for a, a short period of time, realizing, you know, we may not be able to hold forever. You're going to eventually need funds, but allows, you know, the potential for the market to settle if we get back to a more volatile interest rate period. So in October, the issue would sell, just a normal process that we would have for the city's capital borrowings that you do annually, where it would, bids would be advertised for a specific date and time. At that time period, we would take bids from multiple underwriters. We would tabulate those bids and be able to determine who the winning underwriter is, prepare a, a sale day report as we normally would. But then there would be a certificate of approval that would be signed off by whoever is designated in that parameters resolution to sign off on the bonds. And then roughly two to three weeks later, you'd have funds on hand. So that would anticipate closing late October. So that would time in nicely with potentially the timing of your first pay request. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions and turn it back over.
Yeah, I had a question, and this might just be a typo, but I'm looking at the slide on tax impact analysis, and the yearly average over twenty-one years, you have seventy-eight dollars. And that's based on a median of three hundred thousand a home?
Correct.
Yeah, I, I was just looking at the frequency. Ask questions one in here. It has a different price on there for the average.
Yeah, I saw that a little higher at three thirty-eight. That's, we use three, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, I think initially. That was based on the Zillow estimate. My understanding is you, city uses an average that's a little bit closer to three hundred thousand. So I think that could just be either updated in the plan here to show three hundred and thirty-eight thousand or updated on the flyer.
Okay.
Whichever you prefer.
All right, just, just very fair. Thank you.
Yep.
So I have a question also on that slide. So it says annual taxes for a three hundred thousand dollar home, give or take. In, in two thousand and twenty-six, it's gonna be three hundred and twenty-eight additional dollars to the tax bill?
No, it would be fifty-seven additional dollars.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
The total would be three twenty-eight.
Gotcha.
Well, and to clarify, that's the debt service portion of the city's taxes, correct? That's not the whole, that's not the general obligation. That's, that's the debt service portion.
I'm, I'm just concerned about how it impacts the taxpayer specifically.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure people don't think that, that, that's the whole city portion. That's just the debt service portion.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't include your general operating. It's, it's not meant to show the operating.
So from year to year, is that, that, that cost going to fluctuate?
This is, that, that column is how much it fluctuates.
Okay.
It's not much, but it's, there's some fluctuation.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a little bit of fluctuation, but there's a little bit of fluctuation in your existing debt levy.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay, I understand.
The debt is, like I said, the debt is meant to be level principal and interest payments when you get to the point of, you know, ramping up to, to full, you know, full repayment here.
What other questions do you have?
So, John, on July seventh, we talk about actually voting on whether or not we're gonna build this fire station. You don't need us to authorize the issuing of these bonds until September.
Correct.
So our next meeting, July seventh, is really our way of showing the community that we're gonna do this.
Correct.
Correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, and the financing will follow.
Okay.
And really, the, the timeline on the financing is, is driven by ensuring that you have funds, really on a timely basis relative to the, to the start of construction and the timing of your first pay request.
Okay.
So I will ask this question as relates to that tax impact analysis. In the average home in the city of West Bend, over the lifetime of this issuance, their taxes will, additional taxes paid will be one thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars over the course of twenty-one years.
That's correct.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yep.
Do you guys have any questions? No? Okay. Any questions on anything? All right, we, we did, we did tell the public that we would allow people to, to come up and speak, make, make a public comment. We do have Trevor and Cory and John, and of course Chief here. I don't really want this to be a Q and A, but if there's, if there's anybody that has any public comment they would like to make on this topic, you're welcome to come up to the mic and, and be heard. And if there's no, yeah, Paul Fisher. This is Paul Fisher. I happen to know him, so if you wanna write his name down for the record, we can do that for you. Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor. And asking my question now because I don't know if it's appropriate to ask it during the Plan Commission portion, but thinking about the fifty to seventy-year timeline, and, and appreciate all the detail you guys have put in on, on the planning side of things. But I guess, Trevor, maybe, maybe this is most directly pointed to you. Looking at the drawing around the bay, the, the equipment bay, and being able to, you know, drive in straight through, I'm not sure what the traffic flow is, if you're, if the vision is to come in and, and around on the east side of the building rather than the west side through the parking lot. But thinking about fifty, sixty years down the road, and Chief mentioned that, you know, the ladder truck today doesn't go to Station One because it doesn't fit. Is there enough clearance to make that turn on the east end, or do we need to potentially look at extending the asphalt surface area on the south side of, of that equipment bay in order to be able to make the turn? And thinking about, you know, as the city grows to, I don't know, fifty thousand in, in fifty years, and we get bigger equipment, is this current design such that it would facilitate bigger equipment like that? equipment like that?
There's two parts to the response to that question. So what we're doing right now is we're using turning template, it's in our software, that size the trucks that they currently have with the turning radiuses and the wheel bases and all of that. What we're also finding is that technology is starting to catch up with these rigs now too, and you're starting to get rigs that have articulating steering on them, so the longer they get now, more wheels move to make tighter turning radiuses. But where we're at right now with the site design, we can accommodate the largest truck making that turn to swing into the backside of the apparatus base.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Trevor, Cory, John, Chief, very much for being here tonight. We will bring this to an action item on our July 7th common council meeting. In the meantime, aldermen, please talk to your residents, constituents, neighbors, ask any questions yourselves that you might have, and we'll keep trying to push information out to the community. I thank Callie and her team for doing a lot of the communication on this so far, and you'll see that continue in the next three weeks, so. If there's no more on this topic, let's move on. We'll move on to our consent agenda items listed in your packet tonight, items six through 22.
Motion to approve, second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderwoman Sizer. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Under agenda items for consideration, we have our city administrator contract tonight. This is for our city administrator, Jesse Tyes, to start as our city administrator on August 11th.
Motion to approve, second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Berquist. Any questions, comments, discussion? Seeing yes, Sparts.
I'd like to thank all the staff members, department heads, city employees, city members, community members, and aldermen that participated in the selection. I thought it was pretty unique and pretty neat to go through.
Yeah.
And I think we've got a very strong candidate.
Yeah, I agree. I hope none of us have to go through that process again. Jesse is very excited to be here, to come join our team. He has a common council meeting tonight in Grafton, but he knows all the topics we're talking about tonight, and he'll be watching the video when he gets home tonight. I talked to him last week, and he's going to be very busy wrapping up in Grafton, but also wants to make every effort he can to start to get to know the council, the department heads, and so forth. So he may be reaching out to you to have a cup of coffee, that sort of thing. He may not. It's just hard to tell right now, just because he's going to be very busy getting things wrapped up in Grafton before he joins us.
He doesn't have any public appearances scheduled before he would start, does he?
We don't have anything scheduled, but he's been invited to German Night, which is a Wednesday night party at Regner Park, where we have a council and boards and committees commission event. He's been invited to the Dirty Ninja Mud Run, things like that. So if I know that he's going to come, if he reaches out and says, hey, Joel, are you going to be at Music on Main, I'll let you all know, and that sort of thing, but nothing's scheduled yet, but he's certainly been invited to a lot of things already, so. All right, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, unanimous carried. All right, our next is a developers agreement for Lakewood Farm subdivision. John?
Good evening. As you may recall, a few months ago, we approved a preliminary plot for Lakewood Farm subdivision. Here before you is the development agreement. It's a pretty standard development agreement. It's an agreement basically between the city and the developer with regard to how they will install sewer, water, streets, all those types of things that will be turned over to the city eventually.
And?
Second.
Thank you, Sparts and Sternig. Any questions? Just want to point out and make sure everybody's clear, because there's, with a lot of these, there could be two development agreements. We have the, like, developers agreement, which was, you know, which is any incentives within the TID, and then this is like the subdivision agreement that sets forth, like, all of the technical requirements for the development. So that's what this one is.
And I should clarify, this is phase one, so they'll probably do it in phases, so you'll see the similar document three other times.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No, one no. Motion carries. Our next one is a request to approve We Energies easement for a sewer utility land. Max.
Good evening, thank you. This is a request to approve an easement for We Energies on land controlled by the sewer utility, and the easement is to maintain underground facility, and they need to add to their existing facilities in the area, and they are requesting a 12-foot wide easement as described in the attachment with your memo. We reviewed the documents that they submitted, and staff and city attorney find it acceptable for the purpose, the sewer utility is on board with it, and so we are requesting that the council approve this easement and authorize signature of it. We Energies will handle the recording of the easement.
Thank you, Max.
Motion to approve, second.
Alderman Butchlook, second Alderman Zingshaim. Any questions, comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Max. Our last is vacant land offered to purchase for approximately 80.94 acres of land, and the tax parcel IDs are listed in the packet. John or Ian?
I got it.
Ian.
Yep. So this is the offer to purchase for the property in the industrial park. This, you'll note that it's a general LLC name that's very similar to the process that was, that went through with, when the Milwaukee Tool Development went in. This is essentially the land holding company. The further details will come forward from the developer as the process proceeds and they solidify any plans. This is a very general offer to purchase. It's basically citing the $1 purchase price, because it's the industrial park in the TID lands, that'll be part of the incentive discussions, based on the sale price. There's general due diligence period in here, that's pretty standard. It's basically whatever due diligence they need with the requirement that a site plan be put forward by November of this year. We're hoping it'll be before that point, but that's kind of the deadline, and then if there's changes to that developers agreement, there's an extension baked into it as well. But then at that point, it, you know, at some point, there will be a, you know, a press release from the developer that cites what's happening, but at this point, they're still, you know, figuring out all the details, and this gives them the time to make sure they can get, you know, design build under contract, make sure everything's in place for their move, and prepare for everything. So it's still, outside of the LLC names, everything is still confidential at this point, but it is moving forward. This is just the next step to lock it in for the future phase.
Motion to approve, second.
Thank you, Alderman Sparts and Alderman Berquist. Any questions? No, that wasn't Sparts, Sternig, sorry. Alderman Sternig and Alderman Berquist. I was even looking this direction. Sorry. Any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to reports tonight. The bid board met on June 3rd, 2025. Mr. Engelking.
Yes, thank you. So, a couple significant things happened at the bid board. We elected a vice president to replace the previous vice president. This would be Rebecca Sirwat, the spouse of the previous vice president. We also elected bid board executive director, and John Fellows, both of those were unanimously approved at the bid board. And we talked about, we talked about amendment to the bylaws of the purchasing power, given how often the bid board is able to meet, the executive director needed some ability to make decisions in lieu of, and we didn't want to have to hold a council meeting to approve every single individual transaction. So, you know, some of the public notices available with the notes on the website, but essentially, the proposed amendment is that the executive director may approve invoices that are in accordance with the bid operating plan. So, and that's sort of suspended a previous dollar limit that we had. Other than that, a lot of discussion about, you know, water meters and other things, downtown lights, decorations. We, I should note that the bid facade grant committee did not award anything this year, so we suspended the upcoming meeting for that. Other than that, I just want to draw attention to a couple interesting things that are coming up. The Global Fest is coming this month, as well as a collaboration, the Downtown Association, I think with the county, and celebration of Juneteenth, which is this week, so. So, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, that's all I have to share.
That sounds good. Thank you. Administrator report.
Thank you. I'll take a moment to brag about our team a little bit. We had a very strong and collaborative department head meeting last Wednesday. Carrie and her team are guiding us through the initial stages of the 2026 budget process, so I promised you continuity of operations, far exceeding that. You heard some of it tonight, moving forward. So when Jesse does get here, he'll be, lots of stuff to catch up on as we're busy this summer. Very impressed with Ian, John, and Max as they struggle, or not struggle, but work, do a lot of things on our plate lately, moving them forward, but a lot of really exciting things. Doug and Max continuously on top of construction. I know construction season is here, barrels are out, but that's a sign of progress, that's a sign of us, you, listening to the constituents and making road construction a number-one priority. And promise you that Doug and Max, on every meeting that I attend, are always concerned with the safety of the roadway, the flow of traffic, and trying to limit the inconveniences that are there. And finally, Mike shared with us last week, Wednesday, Ian Ryan's Westbury Aqua Park brought in the largest gross revenues that the park has seen in decades. So if you remember, not too long ago, you were considering how to get lifeguards, considering shutting down the pond, considering those things, and now it's the largest gross. So kudos to Mike and his team on the Aqua Park. Westbury Bank Aqua Park. Now if we can get a hot and sunny Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, that'll really knock it out of the park. It's coming. Any other alderman reports tonight? Yeah, we'll start down.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. For those that went to Washington County Fair Park, you saw nothing but green, and I mean green. There were some equipment there that was just, just blew my mind away. Some of them, farmers are just huge, but it was an awesome display of John Deere equipment, everything from way back before I was born, and it was great, it was great. And I'm sure hotels and motels around town and any area were really bookful. It was a great, I went there, I had a great time with my grandson, actually wanted to go back again on Saturday. And the other thing, again, I had a constituent call me and compliment the park department for the Aqua Park. Her kids were there, and they said, they just had a blast, and they said that. And we can do whatever we want, and we had all kinds of fun. So they left them play. So kudos to their lifeguards. Mike, great job.
All right, thank you. Brett?
I'm sorry to follow that up with a, just a somber acknowledgement. I'm sure people are aware, if they're not, of the incident that happened in Minnesota last weekend, where Melissa Hortman and Senator John Hoffman were targeted their families, and fortunately Hortman did not survive the situation, but it was revealed very recently that even 11 Wisconsin lawmakers were on the list of the alleged perpetrator. And I guess I just wanted to make a comment about, you know, public service and, you know, those of us who are up here, we do get elected, but we're generally a congenial group that is listen, you know, open to listening to each other, to constituents, to people who have grievances, and I guess I recognize this is a real concerning time in our country's history when something like this happens. I can't think of a precedent where a state legislator was killed, but, so anyway, I just wanted to say, you know, that I think it's appropriate for everyone to mourn, but also just that we do better to change the culture around conversations on politics and recognize that, you know, we can have differences of opinion, and that we can, and that our duty is, as public officials, involves listening to those, especially those who are disgruntled and making space, but that there's also, there's no space for violence in public discourse. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Well said. Brett, Matt?
Kind of echoing John's comments, I happened to be downtown throughout the week and ran into a number of visitors who were here for the classic green, or classic green event at the Washington County Fairgrounds, who were raving about the downtown area and the Riverwalk and the experiences that they were having in the city of West Bend. And then I spent the weekend umpiring at the West Bend Little League Fathers' Day Tournament, where we had over 80 teams in the city of West Bend for that tournament over the course of the weekend, occupying every baseball field available. And a lot of comments about how great this community was, how welcoming everybody was, that the hotels they were staying in, the restaurants they were eating in, across the board, everybody who is here as a visitor thoroughly enjoyed their experience, and I think that's important for our business community to know and understand as well. And a thank you goes out to them, because they become ambassadors for the city of West Bend every time somebody comes and visits their establishment and place of business. So big kudos to our business community, a lot going on over the course of last weekend weekend that was thoroughly impressed by those who visited.
Anybody over here? No?
Very much enjoyed the Holy Angels Festival. John out there? Good burgers.
Good burgers. I don't have anything tonight either. Appreciate just all the hard work of all of our city staff, and police, and fire, and finance office, everybody. You guys work your tails off, and we're in those fun months of summer, so make sure you go out and enjoy all the fun things going around in our great community. So our meeting is adjourned. The plan commission is eager to get up here and have their meeting. Thank you guys very much for being here. We'll get started as soon as you get up here, so we're adjourned. Thanks.